2020 school committee meeting. Uh, let's say it came about at seven thirty-five. My apologies for people that were waiting. Uh, we had a full agenda tonight as far as school building meetings and uh finance and operations. Uh, with that being said, first order of business. Uh, is the approval of our open session meetings of November third, twenty twenty.
I will make a motion, so moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. Okay, let's go with the roll call vote. Mister Mayor.
Aye.
Miss Saros.
Aye.
Miss Cobb LeMay.
Aye.
Miss Dolan.
Aye.
Uh, Mister Kokoras.
Aye.
Mister Chafe.
Aye.
And the chairman votes aye, those uh minutes have been accepted as put in. We have our communication accommodations. Doctor Hackett.
Unmute here, uh, thank you, uh Devon, so really don't have a lot of communications, I do just want to point out that um you do have the enrollment report in your packet which was previously distributed. Um, you can see that the data we're providing is uh is broken out in uh from students who are participating with us in hybrid and and students who are participating with us in in full remote. Uh, and you also see some notations about at the elementary level anyway, um as well as actually at East Middle School about some of the um some of the assignments that we've made to maximize our our staffing or our four mode students, so um if you do have questions, um probably not the the night to go through and ask it because it's quite tedious, but if you do have any questions, please, you know, let me know offline, if you need any more information, I can bring it back to the next meeting, but uh you can get a sense for uh what our numbers are looking like uh with the total enrollment right now as of December twenty twenty of five thousand five hundred and fifteen students, which uh puts us actually up ten students from this time last year. And that is really it for communications.
Okay, uh, moving on to gift approvals. Tonight we have uh two wonderful groups that have given us uh uh gifts to schools. Uh, first is the Branchby High School Athletic Department Gift to Schools totaling twenty thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and zero cents. Due to the generosity of an enormous donor, a friend of Donnie Higgins Memorial Foundation is donating twenty thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars of gymnastics equipment in the form of a gift to the schools. For our boys and girls gymnastics programs at Braintree High School, uh in addition, a Bose sound system valued at a thousand dollars which is included in that total donation will be uh donated for the boys and girls programs to perform introductions uh in or floor exercise routine music. Let's see, as a form of gratitude, the Braintree High School Athletic Department will visibly mount a plaque on one of the walls in the Joseph Stewart Gymnastic Room, recognizing the generous uh generous donation of the equipment from the friends of Donnie Higgins Memorial Foundation. Uh, I'd like to go on and say, you know, our our Braintree High School gymnastic programs, both boys and girls, have always had a history of great success. I would like to thank Councilor Larry Mackin, he uh put us in 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 touch with this wonderful person that was willing to help us with these uh with this wonderful donation, so thank you, uh Councilor Mackin. Uh, do I have a motion to accept in a second?
So moved.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Our second is South Middle School Gift to Schools totaling fourteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. One check in the amount of fourteen dollars and sixty-nine cents uh from Benefit Mobile Incorporated. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. We will now uh roll call vote to accept both those wonderful gifts. Mister Mayor.
Aye.
Miss Saros.
Aye.
Miss Cobb LeMay.
Aye.
Miss Dolan.
Aye.
Mister Kokoras.
Aye.
Mister Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that's unanimous. Thank you to the people with these wonderful donations, they they make us better in so many different ways. Uh, moving on to from the superintendent and staff.
You will be both pleased and relieved to know that I do not have any uh update or any additional information that's not already going to be discussed this evening, so I yield my time. Unless you'd like me to come up with something.
No, I think we're good.
Okay, I understand, you're not the first person who said that.
Okay, from the school committee. We have a the Finance and Operations Subcommittee update, uh which will be given by the uh chairperson of that subcommittee, Mister Kokoras. Mister Kokoras, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mister Devon. So we have a few things to discuss this evening, um. The first is consideration of the second reading for the year of graduation student activity accounts. So Mister Chair, if uh if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. Otherwise, we would be looking for action on that uh this evening.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from the greater uh school committee on this subject?
Mister Chair.
Yes, Miss Cobb LeMay.
Um, I just want to um confirm, so the only thing that really changed was the name of it to specify the year of graduation, is that correct, Mister Kokoras?
Yes, just so it can it can move seamlessly from year to year with the with the class.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Miss LeMay, uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion on that, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, uh roll call vote to move this. Mister Mayor.
Aye.
Miss Saros.
Aye.
Miss Cobb LeMay.
Aye.
Miss Dolan.
Aye.
Mister Kokoras.
Aye.
Mister Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, this passes with your man's vote.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you.
The next, the next item is consideration of approval or first reading of the townwide green community program. And to discuss that, um, tonight we have Lorraine C. and Andrew Maron, so I will turn that presentation over to them and they'll be happy to uh answer questions that the committee may have when we finish.
Great, thanks, Mister Kokoras, um, as you said, I'm here with Lorraine C. as well from the town. And Lorraine is the lead on this grant. So we wanted to bring this to you, and so the town is pursuing the state designation called Green Communities. And this is a a pledge to count uh to cut the town's energy use uh by about twenty percent over the next five years. Uh, and with that, uh, there are also a few criteria that we have to meet in order to apply for that designation. And once we're designated, the town has the ability to apply for the annual Green Communities grants. Which are for any sort of energy conservation measures that uh include energy usage in municipal buildings or water and sewer uh and vehicles. So the the designation itself and the program uh has been designated to about two hundred and seventy uh cities and towns across the Commonwealth. Um, and in total, it's about forty-nine million in energy projects that they've received funding for. Uh, if you can go to the next slide. Uh, so upon designation, uh, the town of Braintree is due to receive about two hundred thousand dollars. So that's right when we make that pledge and we meet a few criteria. And that's what we'll receive, uh after that funding is spent, uh the town is then eligible to apply for uh annual competitive grants uh up to around two hundred fifty thousand dollars annually, uh in total for about uh one and a half million dollars. Uh, if you go to the next slide. And so this is just a quick comparison for some neighboring towns that have received the designation and what funding that they they've received. Uh, if we go to slide five, we'll see their criteria. And so on one and two, uh, these are already met by the town, these are current bylaws and regulations. Uh, the town's fuel efficient uh vehicle policy was also adopted last year on November twentieth, twenty nineteen. Uh, and for criteria three, uh, the town will be adopting an energy reduction plan, uh which is currently being finalized by a consultant. On our, the school side, uh, we already have a contract with Naresco for our energy savings performance contract. And that's estimated to provide about four hundred sixty thousand in annual savings to the schools. So the Green Communities Program will support similar projects on the town side. And for criteria four, uh, so the town adopted, as I mentioned, the uh, the efficient vehicle policy uh last year, and so looking for the school department uh to similarly adopt that as well for for our vehicles here. And for the the last criteria five, uh, that was met uh October last year, when the state adopted the stretch code ordinance that went into effect on January one. Uh, the next slide would just be for any questions. Like I mentioned that since Braintree is already uh in part or since the schools are part of the ESCO project, uh, this grant will primarily focus on our kind of other municipal buildings. Uh, however, the energy savings from the ESCO projects uh will help the town in meeting that overall twenty percent reduction that will the town is committing to. Uh, so the main ask from the school department, school committee will be to participate participate in the annual reporting uh in the fall uh for where the projects have been implemented. And to note kind of what energy savings have been achieved. So any questions, I can try to answer them, and we also have Lorraine here as well.
Thank you, Andrew. Mister Chair, if there are any questions, uh, and also if the committee would like to uh consider approving that this evening or taking it as a first reading, we'll go with whatever the will is of the committee.
What is the will of the committee as far as this first reading or second?
I get as a first reading, please.
I'm in agreement with you, Mister Chafe. I think we can come up with more suggestions and or questions in a second reading. If that be the will of the committee, and it is, um is that the uh conclusion of your um F and O?
That's the conclusion of the first two items, we we now have an update on the consideration of school reopening, January. So Doctor Hackett, if you would mind pulling up that presentation. And as always happens, I lose my video when you do that, but.
Well, I believe everyone, if everyone can see it, I will uh, I can begin, does everyone have that? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got it, yep, I got it too.
You, uh, any, you want to, any, by way of introduction, Mister Kokoras, you have anything else you want to add to this or set it up?
I will uh add in as we as we get to the slides if you if you would like.
I was hoping you might add something right now to give me just a second to collect my thoughts, okay?
We didn't have that choreographed, sorry.
Um, so, well, good evening, everybody, and and I appreciate the opportunity to um to kind of update you from the Finance and Operations Subcommittee meeting that was held ear- earlier this evening, as you know. Uh, there had se- there have been several meetings of your subcommittee to discuss the uh the goal and the the plan to return um students to to full in-person learning um for January twenty twenty-one. We talked a little bit about just to separate this out, uh, pre-K and kindergarten are are going to be treated just a little bit differently as we already, we've, we're not going to be offering full day kindergarten this year, as you know, um, and we already are at right now at four half days for our students, so um, we've been able to uh expand learning for them already, I just also want to make sure that they want to understand that we are talking about this move to an expanded um in-person learning time while also making sure that we maintain and hopefully both maintain and and improve our full uh remote learning option. So the the Subcommittee has been exploring and is looking at and and discussing along with administration, um, four key planning areas, facilities, staffing, transportation, and health and safety. Um, you, as you know, we've done a lot of work around ventilation, uh HVAC repair and ventilation testing. Uh, and we have been talking a lot about trying to figure out as we think about bringing um more students for in-person learning and essentially um bringing the cohorts together. Uh, how we do that within um both within the general classroom and also with our smaller group instructional spaces, which uh will be somewhat still somewhat of a challenge for us that we're still working through. We've talked about some staffing issues and scheduling, uh, we've talked about, uh, we began a conversation at least tonight about transportation. Um, and we have some thoughts on on what we're looking to explore with that as we move forward. Um, and also health and safety, which really tonight, um, with Mary Beth McGrath and from the town health department um and with Gina Athalzy, who is our director of school nursing with us evening, that they were both able to be present for the Finance and Operations Subcommittee meeting, and they were able to speak to a couple of of key topics. Um, Mister Kokoras, I don't know if you want to to do the um analogy.
Beautiful slide. So just, and I think maybe Doctor Hackett wanted me to start with this slide while he was collecting his thoughts, but that's a beautiful photo of a school bus. But one of the things that we wanted to kind of put put out before we discuss where we are as far as the plan goes, is just if we imagine that school bus um has a destination to that smiling face which we've all talked about, which is the time that we can get everybody back to school. We certainly have to think about who's on that school bus as we make those decisions. So whether the school committee or the administration is driving the school bus, we have other people on that school bus that have a voice in what we're trying to do. Right, we have teachers, we have parents, we have the union, we have students, so everybody has a voice, um, certainly our health department. And the thing that we have to think about is as we're trying to get to that destination, whether it be January fourth or sometime in January, we have people asking us to get there differently. Right, we have some people that are saying, speed up and get that bus there as quickly as you can, we have other people saying, slow down a little bit. We have some people saying, stop, right, that we've done enough, let's kind of hang where we are for various reasons. So as we consider what we're going to discuss this evening, just remember that we want to put a plan in place that takes into account all those people on the bus, but we also have to do what's right for the students and do the timing that makes sense that we can execute, so I hope uh you all appreciate the little analogy, and uh Doctor Hackett, if we can move to the next slide.
Thank you, Mister Kokoras. So um, one of the key, some key decisions obviously is we talk about we're uh expanding our in-person learning time, um, most most key of all those decisions really is the what we're doing around in our protocols around physical distancing. Um, for us to be able to uh gain the additional classroom space that we would need to to bring cohorts together, we would need to reduce our physical distancing um from not less than six feet to not less than three feet, and as part of that conversation and the work that we've done on that, we've had a meeting last week, I believe it was last week, the weeks were running together, uh with Mary Kokoras and his uh and his department, um, the health department as well. Um, we talked about two issues specifically, one, we talked about implementation of a new quarantine protocol. As you know, we have been quarantining quarantining entire classrooms regardless of the fact that we have had a six-foot physical distancing protocol in place. Um, we made the administratively made the decision and in coordination with the health department, uh and our school nurses to to essentially come in alignment with the CDC guidance, which is that if you are within six feet for fifteen minutes either consecutively or intermittently, then you would be considered at close contact. That change was actually implemented uh in full this week. Um, I think one of the advantages of being able to implement it this week gives us a couple of weeks with the uh to to see how that goes. Um, and you know, we we know that we're seeing our numbers increase, so um, you know, to try to reduce the number of students who are affected and being sent home, I think was an important step. Uh, obviously that, uh, you know, we we, the intention isn't to interrupt learning in the way that we're learning, uh, we have been doing it, the intention is to make sure that we're staying safe, so that change has already been implemented, that was part of a conversation, a larger conversation uh with the mayor's office with uh around physical distancing to no less than three feet. Um, Mister Mayor, I don't know if you want to um jump in at all and just kind of discuss that that meeting and um where we ended up.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, in regards to the three feet, um, first of all, we know that some schools have less opportunity to space students at six feet. It doesn't mean that all schools will be at three feet, and in some cases maybe four or five feet, in other cases maybe six. The issue is in order to maintain the two cohort, put the two cohorts together, we would need to utilize uh the three-foot objective if necessary, and the way that we had previously been quarantining based on the six-foot uh distancing was uh not necessary, so to speak, it was uh how we wanted to start things out initially just to be cautious. And after we reviewed the numbers, thanks to Nurse Assali uh and all of the staff, uh, we found that it was really a negligible amount if any um cause causes of uh positives being spread from the six-foot distancing. So in order to bring the cohorts together, in order to facilitate bringing the students back to five extended half-days, the three-feet minimum is a necessity. In the case of the three-foot minimum, it gives us the opportunity, as always, to do contact tracing if there is a positive in that particular classroom, so that will be a very important aspect of the three-foot distancing, so we will uh continue to work vigilantly in regards to that. And um, I just think that in order for us to give the students the best education, we must have them back in the schools. We still have the remote option, but the three-foot distancing uh will allow us, if we have uh a struggle at getting students to that six-foot number of distancing, uh to be able to bring the cohorts together and allow them the opportunity to have in-school education, so there has been a lot of discussion uh optimally, uh, and Mary Beth is is part of the Zoom meeting, and she's uh done a great job uh from a health perspective throughout this entire pandemic. And as we discussed it in that meeting and Mary Beth and I have had conversations, the optimal is six feet, we'd love to maintain six feet, but if we have situations where we have to minimize it to three feet, that would be uh the number that, the minimum number that we would go to. And in many cases, there are students that uh, you know, are being taught that need uh assistance that are less than three feet. I'm sure in different situations, the administration could talk more on that, but from my perspective, in order for us to facilitate bringing the students back, we just need to have a very good contact tracing, which we do, and we need to optimize it and utilize it for all those students that are less than six feet from a positive if there is a positive in that classroom. So that's where we're at right now, and I know that if you had any further questions, that Mary Beth could uh give you some updates on that as well. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Miss Mayor, I don't, uh, Gina is also with us, Gina, you want to maybe just talk a little bit about um the contact tracing and um, you know, how we've been managing the uh, any kind of quarantining of the last several weeks and just kind of going into this uh with a new protocol?
Sure, I'll be happy to do that, um, just want to make sure that that people are aware, we we do track these numbers. And um, at the last meeting that we had, we had an opportunity to review all our numbers so far as as it uh pertains to COVID nineteen. So we have had eighty-five active cases of COVID nineteen in our schools right now, um, seventy students, uh, nine of which were virtual and sixty-one were hybrid and fifteen staff members. Whoops. So let's, out of those cases, we had six in September, twenty-five in October, thirty-four in November, and we have twenty so far in December. Out of the students, um, based on those positive cases, we quarantined students and staff. So out of um, we quarantined seven hundred and sixty-six students in September. We have two categories in which we talk about, we quarantine kids and staff related to uh outside school activities, whether it was sports, uh, social events, and we, there were four hundred and fifty-two students that we quarantined for community activities. And out of those four hundred and fifty-two students who were quarantined, there were thirty-seven who became positive related to that quarantine. Um, we quarantined three hundred and fourteen students as it relates to in-school, so if there was a positive um person in school, whether it was a staff member or a student, we quarantined three hundred and fourteen, and there was one student um who was positive, and it may or may not have been related um to the particular exposure that had happened. Is, then we also have the data on our staff. We quarantined a hundred and forty-nine staff members. Seventy-two of those staff members were quarantined because of community um exposure, and five of those staff members became positive while in quarantine. And we quarantined seventy-seven because of school exposure, and only one of those became positive, and it may or may not have been due to the initial exposure, but it was also not in a classroom, it was outside of the classroom within the school building where that potential exposure had um happened. So when we looked at that data, it does, it does reflect the fact that we did not have in-school spread. It also is, it was a time when the numbers were down and now they, they, now they're going up. But I want the community to realize that no matter what the committee decides, um, on how far apart people are going to be, the nurses will be collectively uh monitoring that data, working with the health department, and we will be available to report any trends, just as we made the decision at the beginning of the school year to to quarantine whole classrooms based on the newness of this and the lack of a lot of substantial evidence and data to support what we were going to do. And we did re, we did look at this data, and we did make a decision to revise those quarantine guidelines, and we will keep abreast of that information as we go forward. Um, my my only, my only consideration and concern at this point in time is unfortunately the timing of our upswing, so we will keep, we will keep an eye on it and see where we go from here. Thank you for the opportunity to to um present this information at the school committee.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for you, you're um, you're helping us with this.
Mister Chair, would you want to entertain some questions now while we have both Gina and Mary Beth, um, and kind of the, you know, this is obviously the the decision to uh reduce the physical distancing is kind of pivotal to the plan, or would you like me to continue forward?
Uh, I I I would uh put that to them, I mean, I do think that most people by now realize that any decisions made that concern health are done by the health professionals, not us on the school committee. I I I think that's pretty much a moot point now, right, everyone knows this? Kind of a question. Uh, Doctor, are you frozen?
No, I'm not, sorry, I didn't know if you were asking me the question, it just, it was a hype.
I I mean, I'm putting it out there, I I mean, we've had, well, then a few people ask us multiple times a- a- about certain um decisions and policies that are clearly, clearly, i- you know, in, you know, in in the ballpark of the people that uh decide things when it comes to public health, and that's simply not us, so I I'd like to think that people understand that. Um, I I mean, do you think it does the service for us opening up to public health questions now?
Just for the committee, I didn't know if there were any questions.
Oh, okay.
From the committee.
My my apologies, um, it's been a long day. By all means, by all means, Mister Kokoras, please.
Just, just for clarification, so we will be discussing, as we mentioned last week, um, moving forward with this new guideline if it's the will of the committee, so I think it is a good point to entertain discussion and questions.
By all means, any questions in or comments from the school committee?
Through the chair, if I may, sorry.
By all means, Carla, you have the floor.
Um, I just want to thank um the the health department, Gina F. Sally, I've worked with you, I've loved working with you, I cannot trust you more with these children and staff. I cannot trust you more with these children and staff than like any, like, I trust you completely on your decisions. You've done this methodically. You deal with it every day. I, I just want people to know that we're not just throwing this on the table, that you do truly care, and you do think we can do this. If you think we can, then we should move ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Saros. Any other comments or questions from the school committee?
Mr. Chair.
By all means, Cobb LeMayr, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yes, I also want to thank the committee and. The public health nurses and the school nurses for all their due diligence. Just a couple of questions, comments, or whatnot. So, I understand the need to change the new quarantine guidelines. I think that makes sense that, you know, only close contacts, less than six feet for fifteen minutes or more. Of people considered to be quarantined. I don't have a problem with that. But I do have a couple of questions about the six feet distancing. So, so is it my understanding that both Mary Beth and Jean. Believe that maintaining less than six feet is, is okay?
So, if, if I may, I, I am going to watch over the next couple of weeks to see what happens. When we decrease the amount of people that we put out on quarantine at six feet. And I think a lot depends upon what the virus does in the next couple of weeks. As I said, we had thirty-four cases of COVID-19 in our schools in the month of November. It is December seventh. We have twenty active cases this month alone. So, I'm a little concerned about. I'm not concerned about the three, the three feet. And I do believe that children should be in school, and we should do everything we can to get it. And I think the plan for the extended. The extended half-day is, is a good plan. I'm worried about coming off of the Christmas break and travel and social, socialization and those sort of things. So, I'm concerned about the timing of it. I, I was on a call today with some regional school nurse leaders. And some of those schools are considering even remote after the first, the first week back. Just to be able to catch up on the people who have traveled and making sure that everything's ready for the kids to come back. That's, that's my, that's my only concern, is the, is the timing. And I don't know whether we should wait for a week of the semester break, as, as I know that. People have talked about. I think it's doable, but I'm, I'm just concerned about the timing.
Right, great. Thank you. And another question. So. Is it true that the CDC and OSHA both still maintain that six feet? Of distancing is standard procedure? They haven't changed that, right?
Whenever possible, six feet is, is what they determine to be safest. But remember now, this is something that is relatively new. That we've only been dealing with since March, and things are changing constantly. So, six feet is something that they talked about, not when they were talking about people that had masks at, in the beginning. It's the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that has said that it's okay to go to three feet when it's absolutely necessary. So, I think, as talked about, it only depends upon the number of students that we have in classrooms. And that the, the arrangements will be as far apart as they can possibly physically be to accommodate the students. Bringing them all back on a extended half-day.
Right, I, I get that. And, and Jesse is separate from the CDC and OSHA. So, I was just trying to find out if, if CDC or OSHA had changed any of their. Guidelines to reduce social distancing or physical distancing at all. So, they haven't, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. LeMayr.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the school committee, please? I believe, Ms. Dolan, you have the floor.
Thank you. I too, as much as I always hate the, the thank you pylons, I have to thank Jean and, and Mary Beth for being here. I was very interested to hear your point of view as the professionals. And like Mr. Kevin said, I'm actually not fully convinced that people realize that we are not in charge of the health. Decisions by the tenor of the emails that we receive. I do think sometimes that people think we're in charge of those. So, it's great to have the professionals here and talking about that. So. You know, part of me as a non-professional wonders if we've been able to have our not-in-school levels of transmission. Because we're at six feet. So, I guess, you know, we'll see if we change to the three. My concern has already been articulated in our rising numbers, and I have to wonder. If people are willing to make the appropriate sacrifices to get kids back in school more. Are people willing to do the, the right things to help us get a hold of these numbers? So that we can have kids back. I'm, you know, I'm not sure what that Venn diagram is of, you know, people who want kids back more. And kids who, people who are generating positive tests. I'd like to think that they don't overlap at all, but I really don't know. So, I'm just hopeful that if people really want kids back in school more, that they're willing to do the right things. I share the concern that's been mentioned about extending our in-classroom time right after the holidays. You know, just looking at what happened after Halloween and now after Thanksgiving. I think that's a real concern. And as much as I, you know, can't stand when people point at private schools. I have heard of private schools that are going remote for the first two weeks after the first of the year, just because of situations like that. So, you know, as Jean said, we need to keep an eye on the next couple of weeks with our new quarantine protocols. And kind of see what's doing with that. But those are my, my primary concerns. And again, thank you to both of you for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Are there any comments or questions? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
First of all, when we talk about less than three feet. We really, you know, at, at this point, I don't want everyone to think that. All of the students are going to be three feet apart. There's cases where they'll be six feet apart. And I think that in some rare cases, they'll be three feet apart, just based on the number of students that are in. The cohorts now and combined. In addition to that. The original CDC guidelines, as was mentioned, were six feet apart without a mask. The mask plays a key role in stopping the spread. And when you have all parties wearing masks. You reduce the, the ability for transmission dramatically. So, I just want everyone to understand that even though we will be coming back from a holiday. That we have three feet apart with masks. And I think that the amount of contact tracing that's done by the school nurses. Who assisted us all through the peak that we had back in April, March, April, May, et cetera, is. You know, was really helpful in, and I think that the work that Jean has done in her staff. To really track everything at this point. Has made it a little bit easier to, to make this decision. If folks are traveling out of state, the recommendation would be to get tested before coming back to school. It is the governor's order. So, if you look at every state around us, you need to test. If you want to go up to New Hampshire, you need to test. And if you get pulled over and you haven't taken a test, you get a fine. So, I think that the bottom line is that we need, you know, we need to make sure that we remind everyone. And that's something that the mayor's office will do, you know, if I have to do a robocall after the holidays. Asking people to get tested if they've come back from another state. But moreover, you know, I think on, on a regular basis, the, the residents of the town have really done a great job. At following the rules. And I think that it's made us a healthier community because of that. But I can't stress enough that the three feet is the minimal, but the goal would be to get to the six feet. So, until we know exactly how many students we have in each particular school. And how much space we have, and whether we can utilize some, some additional space. We're not using. We're not having lunch. We're not having PE. So, I think with those, with those things, we do. We, we end up with more space to spread students out if, if need be. So, I would leave that up to the administrators. But the goal is to not be at three feet whenever possible, and only to be at three feet when it's impossible to, to be otherwise. So, just wanted to make that a little bit clearer. But as far as testing, when people come back from vacations. If they, if they decide to leave the state, they have to be tested, and we're hoping that everyone does that. And, and I will reiterate that through a robocall at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that clarification and that information. Greatly appreciated.
It's the chair.
Yes, Mr. Kikoros, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Through you. I think, you know, and again, not to continue the. The, the love we have for the health department and our, our school nurses. Obviously, that is a place that we feel very comfortable, and we, we know that those concerns will be raised. And certainly, whatever decisions we make will be enforced, you know, after the holiday. If there's a reason to, to change or to, you know, to veer from that. I think one of the things that we, and I think the mayor said it quite clearly, but I heard it also today from the governor. And it's true that it's all about behavior, right? If we want our kids back in school for more time. After the, after the holiday, then it's not just traveling out of state. It's, it's all the things that we know have caused the issue after Thanksgiving. So, again, if we have gatherings, if we have behaviors even, you know, in and around town or in, in the area. That are not following the guidelines, this is the situation we're going to be in then too. So, we, we have to urge everyone to, you know, again, if you, if the goal is to get students back in school as much as we can. Then we have to, we have to behave that way so that we can do the things that we're trying to do. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now, thank you, Mr. Kikoros, for putting up, pointing that those behaviors out. I think one of the reasons why we're not suffering as bad as other groups is that people took Thanksgiving seriously. There were, I think the predominance of the people cut back on the type of, shall we say, rivalry that they normally have at Thanksgiving. You know, not having high school football and things like that. Yes, it was terrible. It, it didn't make the holiday any better at all. But as we've reduced those, shall we say, behaviors that put ourselves at risk. We are helping our children and ourselves. Thanks again, Mr. Kikoros. Any other comments or questions from the school committee?
Through the chair, if I may.
Yes, Carla, please.
One more question towards Jean and Mary Beth. If a classroom is unable to maintain the three feet minimum. Will move to the bigger room? Like, how will that work? Like, if we can't do the three feet, and it's like a foot and a half. I'm kind of not okay with that. Is, how is everyone feeling towards that? How are you feeling?
If I may, through the chair.
Please, Mary Beth.
Mayor Kikoros would tell you this, and so would Dr. Hackett. I'm not a huge fan of the three feet. I've never have been a huge fan of the three feet. But in the time that the school has opened, the school department has taken up. You know, the, the requirements were more stringent than the CDC in the state. And I like to think that the reason that the school department has succeeded to this point is because of those precautions that have been put into place. So, at some point, we do have to put our feet in the water and do a little bit of experimenting to see what. Way we can go next. And the Dr. Hackett, with the assistance of the mayor. And allowed myself and Jean F. Sali and public health nursing to participate in a meeting last week. We had a discussion about lifting the quarantine requirement that was in place and lessening it. And so, over the next two weeks, two and a half weeks before we get to the Christmas holiday, that gives us some good time to be able to evaluate where we are with that. So, as much as the, we have the COVID-19 scientific piece of this and the illness. It's very important to me, and I know it is to Mayor Kikoros, and I know it is to all the school committee members as well as parents and students. The emotional factor that's involved as well to get the kids back into school is really critically important. So, we do have to move forward, but I do say this, that whatever plan is arrived at. That it be considered somewhat fluid, because I will tell you, we are experiencing a surge. And it's no, you know, it's no mystery that that wasn't expected. And I do agree with Mr. Kikoros that risk behaviors have played a huge role in that. Travel, gatherings, and just behavior, behaviors and activities occurring in the community and outside of the community. That play a huge role in the prevention or susceptibility to COVID. So, I do agree with the, the statement that Mr. Kikoros made, that that is a huge portion that needs to be considered. Other risk behaviors and bringing the kids safely back to school. I would love to see the kids back in school. I've always been a proponent of that. And I think that as we move forward between now and the Christmas break, we'll have some more data. To indicate where we're at with the new quarantine requirements that have been put in place. There is a concern that we will see continued increase in cases with the holidays. And so, when I say a fluid plan, that really needs to be considered. Because although you may make a decision to bring students back five days a week in a extended day program. On January fourth, please make sure that that can be, it's not so restrictive that it's not fluid. Because we really need to evaluate at that point where we are with the numbers in the community that could impact the schools, and we don't want that to happen. I want to see the kids back in school, absolutely. I think it's very important, not only from a scientific. Data perspective, but also from an emotional perspective for our kids, because I think that, that is equally as important in this, in this whole equation.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Your points are duly noted, and we as the school committee look forward to working with the Department of Public Health. And like you said, this is a very fluid thing. If there's anything that's been consistent about this virus, it's the fact that it's not consistent. And sometimes we have to take a couple of steps forward and a step back. We're willing to work with you and do what we have to to keep our people safe. Thank you.
Right. If I could add one more thing, and I think I neglected to answer Mr. Saros's question, is that I would absolutely not be in favor of less than three feet. The minimum requirement is three feet, and if there's one thing that we need to do, is at least stick to the minimum requirement if we cannot exceed that. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, thank you, Mary Beth. So that you know, that, that is absolutely a parameter within our planning. I can show you kind of a, an example of some of the challenges we're going to have, just based on the number of kids within the cohorts that would be combined. That we'll be bringing back. But we do have some, some solutions for some situations where we might just be too tight. So, we're going to absolutely hit, no, without a question, at least three feet, three feet. I think the majority of our situations will be more than three feet. Obviously, we still want to be as close as six as possible. And so, that's the analysis that we're doing now.
Thank you, Doctor. Any other comments or questions from the school committee? Hearing none. I believe that brings us to public comment.
The chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chafe, you have the floor.
Sorry about that. I tried to unmute it. I'd like to put forward a motion to move the physical distance to three feet.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion. We have a second. We'll go through a roll call vote. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb LeMayr.
No.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kikoros.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes six-one. Thank you for that. Yes, Mr. Kikoros.
If I may, Dr. Hackett, did we want to go through the rest of this before we go to public comment? Just so the committee can see the first, the first draft of where, what you're thinking.
I am happy to continue if, if the committee would like me to do so.
Please do so, Doctor.
Okay, and if you can stand it, I should probably add.
For the second time.
All right, for the second time. So, just, you know, again, just a couple more points on this slide with, with key decisions. Obviously, food services, which has been mentioned tonight, you know, we do have some, some parameters around that. That, that creates some issues for us if we were to be having kids eat in school. We've talked a little bit about that from a space standpoint. We also know that that introduces a period of time where kids would be taking their. that introduces a period of time where kids would be taking their masks off. And and we already know that we are, we are certainly overcrowded in certain buildings from the perspective of the distancing that we would want to do that with and how we would feel comfortable. So that's also a, you know, a key part of our planning to move forward and obviously the implementation timeline. Was the logistical challenges we've talked about before, and I think we've really kind of covered them all here tonight already. So I'm not going to read every single one of them, but I will have Mr. Lee speak to number two and number five and six. But I just also remind you that we do have several small group instructional spaces that are currently offline in various buildings. As we've talked about before, back when we were introducing special education programming, you know, nobody was really thinking about HVAC issues. So oftentimes, and we're not alone with this, certainly across the Commonwealth, but regular general education classes were often split up into multiple rooms. And there wasn't really a lot of attention necessarily paid to what side of that space the HVAC system was on. So we have some spaces where we do not have either mechanical ventilation or windows. We're not using those spaces for for instructional purposes. We've taken those offline. We've done a really good job, I believe, in in making all the repairs to our HVAC systems where we've been able to, and we've also been able to get the ventilation testing done. We continue to test and then fix and then test and then fix. We are getting close to the end of that process, and we have deployed tens of almost hundreds of HEPA filters across the school system where we've had concerns about not meeting the as-built ventilation standards as provided by ASHRAE, which is the organization that sets those standards. So Jim, if you, Mr. Lee, if you wouldn't mind just kind of hitting on a couple of these points from this slide around the the logistical stuff around scheduling.
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Hackett. As I believe you all know, the schedules work a little bit differently at each one of our levels, elementary, middle and high school. We have working groups at each level assessing what is the best path forward, given the desire to get kids back into school on a daily basis. In those conversations, there are some logistical challenges that we are entertaining to try to figure out the best solutions. One is around a schedule that is compressed with kids simply in the morning with particularly at the elementary and the middle school level, looking to get most of the major academic classes given during that time when the kids are physically in school. That is an impact on our ability to schedule specials. If we have to schedule them all in the afternoon sessions when the kids are no longer in school, that window gets very compressed and makes scheduling very difficult. So we are looking at options related to that. Again, that really is an issue mostly at the elementary and the middle school level. As we had begun the school year, as many of you know, we are operating a program at the elementary and the middle school level that looks slightly different than that at the high school level. At the elementary and the middle school level, in essence, we have teachers in classrooms that are fully remote and dedicated in to a remote capacity. So we have a remote teacher teaching a remote kids a particular class or a particular subject. And that's the model that we've used, and we've been able to align resources and personnel and students to to make that work, although we had to transition some people around at the middle school level earlier in the year. However, at the high school level, those full remote kids are interspersed with the hybrid kids in existing classes. Is the number of full remote kids at the high school has increased. That's become increasingly problematic from an instructional standpoint. So we are looking at options available to us to be able to separate those two groups out. So in a perfect world, have time or classes that are full remote with teachers dedicated to that full remote group. Again, whether that is a completely separate program or an embedded program with just those classes being taught specifically in a remote capacity by a teacher devoted to the remote classroom remains to be determined. As you also know, earlier in the year, we had a number of staff members for a variety of different reasons who had requested certain accommodations to their their workday related to medical issues or some family issues that needed to be dealt with. I think overall, we were able to accommodate the vast majority of those requests. As we look at a new schedule, those accommodations will have to be reevaluated to ensure that those accommodations are still working, not only for the individual staff members, but for the district as well. And so that that's a process that's ongoing as we speak. And we'll have better clarity once a schedule for each level has ultimately been determined.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Some of the kind of things that we're still obviously working on, we've already talked about staffing and scheduling, and again, we have covered it. We know what some of the some of the challenges are, but I think most importantly, and this is difficult because we know that as we change to a more regular schedule, as we've changed our quarantining policy, there's going to be obviously some effect on how people are feeling about whether or not they want their students to be in person with us. But there there is a, there's a, it's a really, we have to know what the number is that we're planning for. It's incredibly important for us to have a solid and close to solid number as we can have as we work through the scheduling. Because there just really isn't much room for error. I mean, when you talk about the breakdowns between hybrid and full remote and how we're staffing it, and as you all know, I think we did, you know, the right thing in the beginning of the year to allow the as much flexibility as possible. But it also, you know, it caused us some some pain that took us some time to to overcome. I still think it was the right thing to do. But it it really made things more difficult, and it really kind of hampered our ability to to provide as as stronger program as we would like to have been able to, because we just had almost a complete upside down shift in in staffing for full remote and hybrid. So as we go into this, however, we want to decide, and I do appreciate concerns that we may have students who are out right now, who if we make this change would come back, but we also cannot be in a situation, and the stakes are so much higher now, where we think we have a certain number of kids coming back to a classroom. And all of a sudden, there are five more students and we've maxed out that classroom space and we don't have any other options. So however, we get there and, you know, we don't have an answer to this question yet, but we have got to control for that starting number. And once we lock that starting number in, we have got to say that we are not going to be able to take movement. So we can talk more about that administratively. We continue to discuss that. We've talked about a kind of a controlled reentry process. There are certainly points at different grade levels, the high school, middle school, for example, where there are better transitional times for students to return from full remote. Thinking really more specifically about about the quarter quarterly marks. And, you know, but it we do have to keep that in mind. I just want to make sure that publicly everyone understands that that is going to have to be a parameter that we're going to have to insist on. And, you know, we'll continue to work on the details and communicate with you. Once we can figure out a process that 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 makes the most sense or is the best that we can do. Also, transportation, you know, we're continuing to explore how we might be able to get more students on the bus. We know that obviously that's our goal. It's kind of similar to the conversation we're having right now about distancing. You know, what are we comfortable with if we are going to go to a physical distancing of not less than three feet, understanding we're going to try to maximize it all the time? How can we apply that to the buses and to transportation? One of the things that we did learn through a webinar, Mr. Cronin, our director of operating finance and operations, sat in on, I believe, last week was that buses, the fans on the buses and not the recirculating fans, because we don't want to recirculate air, obviously. But the fans on the buses naturally, mechanically, provide about four air exchanges per hour. So that was really good information to have. That is a really good air exchange rate. And when you combine that with us continuing to crack the windows to the mayor's point, you know, we still, kids are going to be wearing masks. We're going to take all those precautions. I'm feeling more comfortable that I think we can figure out. I continue to look at ways in which we can get more students on the bus. The again, the challenge is, you know, once we start doing that, then we want, we've got to know that number again, right? So we're going to explore reducing from two miles, two plus miles, which we are required to do. We have no choice but to provide that. So we can't get that number wrong. To see if we can drop down to 1.5 and maybe what we consider is going through similarly to a required registration process. And and if we get to a situation where the numbers look like they're going to exceed our capacity, we find some way of going through some kind of a lottery system, as much as I just even say it out loud makes me sick to my stomach, because I just know that that's not a great way to do business, but we just don't have a lot of options, again, because of the distancing we need to maintain. We will focus first on K through six to expand that transportation, and then we will continue as we've tried, and it's been a challenge to reach into seven through 12. Just a reminder, everybody in the audience, that we do not hire a bus company. We are our own bus company. There have been always a lot of the advantages to that, but the fact of the matter is, we can't, we can't call our transportation depot and have them get buses from some other, you know, school system that were, you know, that they're operating and like a like a first student can. So we we are, our economy of scale is limited, which which has made this situation a little bit more challenging. And finally, just looking at the implementation target dates, you know, our plan right now is to go to synchronous Wednesdays. We believe that we're going to be in good shape to do that for all students in grades five through eight east and six through eight at south. That would begin on, we'd have one date in December, December 16th, and then January 6, 13 and 20 would also be synchronous Wednesdays for those grade levels. We would look to implement an expanded in-person return for elementary grades one through four. Again, kindergarten is already really pretty much at a four-day-a-week full program. We would bring kindergarten in on the Wednesdays to add the fifth day. We may need to look at collapsing some of the cohorts at kindergarten, just because of the way the numbers are breaking out. But that date for grades one through four on day January 4, 2021. And then finally, for the high school, east and south middle schools, the natural point for us to to make the transition to more in-person learning for a variety of reasons would be at the end of the second, end of the second semester. I'm sorry, going into the third, I'm sorry. End of the first semester, looking at going into the second semester as opposed to quarters at the end of January. So that those are the implementation implementation target dates that we're working with. And finally, I just wanted to, going back to Ms. Saros's question about physical distancing within classrooms, as we showed this to the Finance and Operations Subcommittee. Obviously, again, we're going to look to exceed three feet wherever we can, but this gives you some sense of at three feet physical distancing. This is a this kind of a standardized calculator. At three feet, what what the number of classroom desks, we can get into those spaces. And you can see 650 is 18. Now, these numbers sometimes work, sometimes they don't work. There's a lot of quirky things in classrooms from built-in furniture to not really rectangular or square classrooms exactly that that really can have an impact on these numbers. But then just to take a look at, just to give you an example, I'm just going to point to Highlands. So you know, for example, Highlands, grade one, currently in the combined cohort, the students that we know we have in hybrid right now, if we combine cohort A and B, we would have 70 students in that in that combined cohort. We have currently three sections that we're teaching in person right now. And that gives us an average class size of 23. Highlands, you know, is tighter than other schools. Liberty is also in a similar situation, and then we're not going to talk tonight really about about middle school and high school, but South is also in in the same situation. We have really some serious space constraints, but at the same time, we do have classrooms at each one of our elementary school that we are not currently using. We're utilizing those to allow teachers to teach full remote from those classrooms. In some cases, in some cases, we're utilizing those classroom spaces for other reasons. You know, we may be in a situation, to answer the question directly, that we might have to to look at offering and implementing an additional section of a, at either of a class, for example, or even at a grade level. So again, that's the analysis we're doing now. But we will, there's, you know, we're not going to be in a situation where we're not going to be at least three feet physical distancing, and the goal obviously is to approach six as best we can. So, Mr. Chair, that's really all I have for the for the presentation. Mr. Co Corus is chair of the Finance and Operations Subcommittee. I don't know if you would like me to cover anything else or?
I do believe Ms. McGrath had her hand up to add more to this.
I think that was from earlier.
That was from earlier.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure.
Down for you.
Mr. Co Corus, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you, Dr. Hackett and Mr. Lee. Mr. Chair, the only thing, and it may be a point of clarification. I believe that the plan that Dr. Hackett has laid out here tonight. And Dr. Hackett, you may want to bring that slide back up for the committee. I believe the plan that he's laid out is what his best best thought is of what we can execute based on the dates that were put forward. And I'm sorry, I lost my screen here, but so I guess the clarification I'm looking for is is it the will of the committee this evening to allow the administration to move forward on the plan that they believe they can execute, which again, I believe is under the purview of the administration? So if we need a motion to move that forward, I'm happy to do that, but I just wanted a clarification from the chair.
Yes, I do believe this is a classic case of administration putting forth their best efforts to better educate our children. So I don't believe it's it's that a motion is needed. I mean, we did motion and vote earlier as far as the three feet. It's when we do major changes where we have to go through the motion process and whatnot. Is that the clarification you were looking for, Mr. Mr. Co Corus?
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, do they have all they need from us to execute what they've laid out on that slide? Do we do we need to do anything to allow them? After the vote, do we need to do anything to allow them to move forward with that plan?
Doctor?
You know, thank you for the question. Really, the three feet, you know, no less than is the is the key decision in all this. You know, we will, we're already working on, we'll continue to work on the schedules. I think we're going to need some further conversation, not necessarily the school committee will approve, but we we are very much interested in in getting your views on how we treat the the movement between full remote and hybrid. What's our starting point so that we can help everyone understand what the parameters are? And there are breakpoints where we would not be able to do certain things. I think this is really important to flush out and and have the school committee or subcommittee of the school committee have the discussion. But from a standpoint of, you know, do we have what we need? That decision is was is pivotal. And then, you know, we presented these dates. We will work toward hitting those dates. So we're, you know, confident we can do it. And you know, to everyone's comments tonight, we know it's a fluid situation, and I think everyone's aware of that. So I don't, I can't think off the top of my head unless we were talking about some kind of expenditure that we're not anticipating, which, again, we're not anticipating it. But I think, you know, I feel like we have what we need from the committee at this point.
Okay, that was, that was the clarification I was looking for, Mr. Chair. So just to make it clear that we we've given Dr. Hackett the authority through the vote for three feet to implement the plan that he's laid out. Again, with maybe further discussion about how we would execute changes in the current enrollment, I guess, is the only thing that is kind of an open question.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Dolan, you have the floor.
So that's a point that should have been made before we voted for the three feet. You know, to now say, well, actually, you don't have to vote on this, it feels a little tricky to me. You know, if it had been made clear to us when we were voting on the three feet, that what we are actually approving is everything else that followed it in this presentation. I think it may have been cause for more discussion, and at least from my point of view, more consideration. The two points that I would have raised, were we voting on this as well, is that I don't think the transportation issue can be divorced from the increased time in school. So we've all gotten emails from people feeling a lot of difficulty and angst over getting their kids to and from schools for the half days. So I think getting clarification on the transportation and doing a reevaluation of that needs to go hand in hand with asking people to come back more. And I maintain my concern that I mentioned earlier about anybody coming back for more time, starting on January 4. So those were the two points that I would have made. And again, I guess I request in the future that if we're voting on things that we're not going to see until after, we vote on something that we make that very clear. Thank you.
Duly noted, Ms. Dolan.
The chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you. I think that, you know, we as a school committee have a obligation to vote on things like the budget and some of the other requests. This is purely administrative. Once we took the vote to go to three feet, it leaves the administration the opportunity to bring back based on the numbers, whatever whatever grades they can to the five. whatever, whatever grades they can to the five days a week and facilitate getting, uh, the best education for, for the children. So I, I think that it's not so much, uh, a situation where we need to manage every aspect of it, other than the health side coming from our s- school nurse and and our, in our town, um, health department. But, you know, other than Jean and Mary Beth's, uh, input, I think that it's really the administrative, administration's responsibility and it's their, it's, it's their ability to facilitate making sure the kids can come back. So I, I, I look at it as if we keep coming back and having meetings and talking about, um, you know, many of these different items. I think that it really kind of gets in the way of, of the administrators doing their jobs and being able to do their jobs well. So I think that we have, um, really, uh, you know, uh, an outline of what we'd like to have done, and we have dates set. And the administration is going to do everything they can to get those things done. I do agree, transportation is a, is a very big issue, and I think that that's something that we really need to work on to make sure that we get the children to and from school. But overall, I think the three-foot distance, uh, vote just allows the administration to do their job and to put together a plan. If there's something that deviates from the impl- implementation of these items that they are targeting, then that is something certainly that should come back to the committee. But hopefully, the next time, uh, we have a, a meeting, um, in the future, we will have this plan, we'll have a good understanding as to what our transportation strengths are. And hopefully, we have the ability to maintain more than three feet in the majority or supermajority of these classrooms. So I, I believe that in the conversations with the chairman and with, uh, health department and superintendent, we have worked very hard to, to try to come up with some good plans here. And I think that superintendent has, has made a great proposal. And I look at other communities and, you know, we are certainly, uh, one of the best communities, if not the best community. And I think that what we're doing today and speaking with other mayors, uh, in, in different Zoom meetings, they're not doing, um, they're not able to do the things that we're doing, uh, based on our administration and the hard work they put in. So this is only going to enhance, uh, the education for us students. And I rely on superintendent and his administration to be able to have the ability to get the job done without having to come back week after week to give us, um, a plan that they've kind of laid out here. I think there's, if there's challenges, definitely, uh, there should be additional meetings in which we can help them with those challenges. But aside from that, I, I put my trust in superintendent and the school department as a whole to get this accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, greatly appreciated.
If I may?
Yes, Ms. Saros, you have the floor.
Sorry.
No worries.
I know I, I am completely forgetting these kids back to school, but listening to everyone, I am so concerned with the holiday. And I know January fourth was set, but like with the holiday, you know, people are not going to be, be responsible for their actions. We've seen, Jean said the numbers have gone up. I'm just super concerned, those first two weeks. Heading straight in and being like, here, make more kids, put them all in the class. Here's a room of twenty, twenty, twenty-one kids, even eighteen, you're still getting more. I mean, even going two weeks later, just letting that buffer happen. I think it is a good idea and responsible on our part, we're getting the kids back. I know January fourth was hard, but like we do have the holidays. I'm just stating my opinion, I'm completely concerned about it. Getting more kids in each class for that specific date, back right after a holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saros, greatly appreciated.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Cobb, the mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, um, I too want to say that I'm concerned about the timing, just like Jean said she was concerned about the timing, um, and I too also think that we should revisit this, maybe in a, in a week or so, and just, um, think about the consideration of, um, going full remote for the two weeks that we come back from, uh, winter break. So I, I also want to say that, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb, the mayor.
Mr. Devon?
Yes.
I, thank you, I need to make a point of clarification. Um, I very much trust in the administration. I was simply commenting on the precedent that has been set before, where it's not as if in August or September, we voted merely on six feet. We voted on an entire plan. So that's why I believe, you know, it's great that the chair has talked about it with the administration and the mayor's office. I mean, I'm glad that all of you guys are in sync, that this is, you know, really only the second time the rest of us are hearing about it. So, you know, again, I'm talking about a precedent. So I think that we need to be more clear going forward. I agree, we don't need to vote on every little thing, but we did vote on a plan before in September. So I think it was a reasonable expectation, um, to understand what we were voting on this time. But I am, of course, in full support of the administration's work and always have been. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Kikoris, you have the floor.
If I may, and thank you, and, and I think the comments from previous speakers are relevant. And I think what, what we have to be clear about, and, uh, you know, maybe it wasn't made as clear at the beginning of the presentation, is that this is just an extension of the vote that we took back in August or September. Um, so this is the administration's best effort to continue that plan, which is more in-school learning. The real key, the real key decision that had to be made, and if that wasn't clear, um, last week or earlier this evening, was the three-feet distance. Because obviously, we can't get, we can't extend any more in-school time without that decision being made. So, uh, you know, I agree, we, we have to have confidence in the administration. They've put together in that slide what they believe they can execute, rather than having the school committee tell them what to execute. So, you know, I hope that we all have confidence that, again, things may change, things may move. I understand the concerns about the first couple of weeks of January, we all have them. But again, as we said earlier, we'll adjust and veer, you know, to what the science and the numbers tell us at that time. So I, I want to put my faith in the administration. And if the health department and the administration come back and tell us that January fourth doesn't make sense, then I would hope that the administration would come to us and say, we're going to make it whatever the right date is after January fourth. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kikoris. I think you brought up a, a great point. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, use my time here so we can kind of wrap things up, because things are fluid. If this, and like I said before, this is the most fluid situation that's hit society in, in generations. And what are we knowing? The fact that as soon as we voted in August to move back, what we did was we started thinking about, okay, how are we going to improve this? The planning has not just been tossing coins, and we know that there have been times when, um, people bring up Desi and, and, and some of the other alphabet soup people, that we asked for guidance months ago, and what they did is they shrugged their shoulders to us, the town of Braintree. So what do we know? The fact that your mayor, that your, uh, uh, Ms. McGrath, uh, superintendent, myself, and others in this committee and our counselors have led this town when we asked for guidance from others and didn't get it, and now they want to come back. And I can appreciate that, but your town has been run by your, your, your elected officials. And I, I believe that, have we been perfect? How can you be perfect in something that changes on a daily basis? But I believe that we've done a good job. Now, with that being said, um, we'll continue to do that. We're having ideas right now as to trying to move forward, and we are concerned with the second two weeks of, uh, January after the Christmas break. And we have people right now on one side saying, shut it all down and go full remote. And on the other side, please open and open it all up. And no matter what we decide, there's going to be a, a segment of the population that is simply not going to be happy. And I understand that. We walk a tightrope, and on either side, there is no net. We are doing the best we possibly can. I do thank each and every member of the school committee and your opinions. We value them, and the, y- y- yes, they are valued. And we look, we, we will assess those and, and, and have more discussions and make a better decision for the people of Braintree. Thank you. Mr. Mr. Uh, Hack, uh, I'm sorry, Dr. Hackett, you had one thing you want to say in closing before we go to public comment?
Please, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as the, as the person that, uh, you've been speaking about, uh, or my administration, the third person, uh, first of all, I appreciate your confidence. I felt like, um, I felt like, um, our nursing staff got a little bit more kudos than we did, but I do appreciate the effort. So, but I, I, let me just, I, let me offer this perspective. One, this is not an insignificant change for us to pull off. We need the vacation time to do things just like pull tables out of some classrooms and put desks in if we need to do that. We need every minute we can get to schedule this. There's no, if we think about it this way, if, if, let's say the holiday vacation turns out that the numbers are bad, the decision at the end of that is going to be the same decision whether we're at six feet or whether we're at three feet, right? I mean, if we go remote as a result of numbers that are out of control, we're going to go remote whether we're at six feet or whether we're at three feet. So from my perspective, you know, this change doesn't have an impact on the decision, nor should it, around what we do in coordination with the health department, the mayor's office, around whether or not we have to go full remote. What we've been able to do really, really well to this point is manage those pockets, uh, where we've had, you know, staffing issues because we got hit with a lot of quarantines. I think some of you may be aware that, uh, East Middle School for Cohort A and one of the grade five teams, um, had to go remote today and tomorrow, but it didn't shut down the entire grade level, it didn't shut down the entire school. I mean, it really is a localized decision a lot of times, because there are some schools that have been impacted more than others, and, and, and that has gone back and forth. So my other point is that you're not making a decision tonight, my perspective, as to whether or not how we're going to treat the weeks after the, uh, the December break. I mean, the numbers are going to be the numbers, and our response is going to be our response. And if it's bad, then we may be in a situation, we have to talk about going rule for a period of time. Maybe it's a school that has to go for, you know, that's, that's how this is going to go. There's nothing that you're deciding tonight, from my perspective, that changes that decision-making in terms of our response to whatever happens with the virus, obviously, which is something we can't control. So I just wanted to make that point, and I do appreciate your, your support and, and your time.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. At this point, we'll be moving on to public comment. Let's remember the rules of public comment. Uh, each person has three minutes. Um, we ask that you keep to things that were on our agenda. We ask you to please be respectful of every and any opinions, whether you believe in them or not. Dr. Hackett, our first person.
Sorry, just need a minute to transition here.
No worries.
Uh, first is Karen Carey.
Ms. Carey?
Good evening. Um, I just have a couple of questions. So I was just wondering if the thought of food service was ever brought up to Mary Beth and Jean on whether they thought it was safer to serve food in the schools versus going to the three feet, because they seemed a little apprehensive to the three-foot, um, distancing. I realize that there's some issues as far as, um, space in some of the schools. But like a school like Braintree High, which was built to accommodate about four thousand students, has a lot of open areas. So I don't know if maybe that was something that could be considered in expanding Braintree High into full day and utilizing some of those open areas. Also, I was wondering if, um, there, we were going to get a clearer picture of what the new plan would be and what the schedule would be, and what the hours of extended day would look like, and how, um, the classes would, would work as far as scheduling and what classes would be in-person and which ones would be asynchronous, if that's how it's going to be in the afternoons, or whether we would have Google meets for the, the latter part of the day. Um, and then there's the concern about not allowing kids to transition back from remote to hybrid, um, as Braintree High went from twenty percent to fifty percent fully remote in the last couple of weeks. Um, there's some concern there if the kids are now going to be switching to different teachers for, um, if they're now in the remote academy, which, when they were switched over, we were just told that they would have to switch over at a certain period, which would be either midterm or the beginning of a new semester. So now it sounds like that has changed, which, um, is a little concerning that there were kids that switched for one reason and would like to go back. Um, I think that's all that I have for right now.
Thank you very much, it's greatly appreciated, appreciate your time. Dr. Hackett, our next person?
Uh, yes, uh, it's either Shawna Stock or Shawna Stock.
Stock, you have the, uh, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you for us, uh, for listening, and thank you for all of your planning and flexing and all of that. I just have a question about the three-foot. Is it three-foot center of seat to center of seat, or is it three-foot shoulder to shoulder? As you think about growing children, um, you get a little bit closer, closer. Um, also, as someone who would be very much interested in sending a remote student back to a hybrid learning opportunity, I would wonder what the transition would be in, um, for, you know, switching from one group of teachers and one group of peers to another group of teachers and another group of peers, um, especially for an anxious student, like what it would look like as far as introductions and all of that, especially where we may be shutting down and there may be an opportunity for, for this to happen remotely at home. I would just be curious to know how that information would be given to us ahead of time so that we could make our choice. And that is all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Trondin?
Yes, Trondin, I believe she's our new BEA president?
He is.
Please, you have the floor.
Hi, um, like everybody now knows, I'm Trondin, I am the new BEA president. And I, I'm also a teacher at the high school, and I am also a resident of Braintree for many years now. And I have three children in the system. Um, today, I'm going to speak as the BEA president, uh, not necessarily as a resident, although, again, I do have questions, concerns, but I'll bother you all at different times for that. Um, so, uh, to the Braintree School Committee, the education and welfare of our students is important to the BEA. As such, it is important for the members, uh, to get their voices heard. The January fourth return date has been floated for some time, as has the move to three-foot distancing. The BEA has a lot of concern over any timeline and plans that do not reflect the realities of our current situation. All changes to policies and schedules should be well thought out and communicated in a way that allows for staff and families to adjust to new circumstances. And the BEA does not feel like this has been done yet. Any return date should reflect the realities of our situation. At this moment, Massachusetts and the country are still seeing a surge from Thanksgiving holiday, and we are entering another break in which we anticipate not all members of the public will be making medically sound decisions regarding visiting, distancing and wearing of masks. Instead of planning a return for greater in-person learning time with the three-foot distancing, we should be seriously considering going remote for the week following December break, if not two weeks. This would allow for students and staff to exhibit symptoms and get tested before needing, risking the school committee to even greater exposure. At this time, there are committees looking into schedule changes for the elementary, middle school and high schools. All those plans are in different stages of development, some are only in the earliest of stages. Before these schedules can be vetted for feasibility, certain questions need to be answered. Will the cohort still exist? Will there be a moratorium on students moving between remote and hybrid schedules? If not, are the schedules built in a way that we can provide services with a large influx or exodus of hybrid students? Are the schedules equitable for all students, including the remote learners? Do the schedules meet the educational needs of the students, and are the schedules teachable? We know that all these questions have answers yet, and some of them may not have answers until we make a change to different schedules. However, we should find out what we can in a thoughtful and deliberate manner and make informed decisions that do not need to be changed over and over again. The elementary schools and middle schools have had a number of changes already, and this constant state of flux has made it difficult to establish routines and norms, and this is not healthy or sustainable for either students or staff. Students like routines and norms and cannot be asked to change. Students like routines and norms and cannot be asked to change on a whim and the same goes for staff. Teachers and parents have been forced into working countless hours outside of school to make these schedules and changes work. Asking staff to react to knee jerk reactions is unsustainable. In closing, while we all wish for a return to normal for our students and ourselves, we should not do so with the rush plan and goals of returning that do not reflect the challenges that we face. We look forward to continue our work with the Braintree Public Schools and the Braintree School Committee to meet the safety, educational and wellness needs of all Braintree staff and students. Thank you.
Our next person is Dr. Hackett?
Joan Marie Cruz.
Ms. Cruz.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Good evening. I'd just like to speak as a grade four parent of a Highland student who is fully remote. I'm getting really concerned that there have been several mentions about staffing changes and flux and that. And I, I'd just like to make the point that, you know, Mr. Kacoros keeps talking about Operation Smiling Faces. Well, you know, the full, the full remote students also need to have smiling faces. And my concern is, you know, these kids have basically gotten a relationship with their teacher. And I'm hoping that the comments about possibly changing and, you know, staffing and that, that you take in consideration. I mean, I'm specifically talking about elementary. I know it's different for middle school and high school, but you know, these elementary kids have developed a relationship with their teacher, their teacher with them. And it's great that they have a dedicated teacher that is remote along with them, that actually can see and understand what they're going through and go with it, with them herself. And also, like I say, get to know these kids. And I'm just concerned that if you start, you know, oh, there's, you know, tons of kids going back to hybrid and we have to take the, you know, move, you know, teachers and adapt to that. Just remember these kids. I mean, you know, yes, I understand numbers change, but they have a relationship with their teacher and their teacher tries to make, in fact, doesn't, I must commend her, does an awesome job of doing her utmost to give these kids the best education that she can under the circumstances. And in fact, to be upfront, I've been getting the vibe from everyone when they keep hearing, you know, they have to be in front of the teacher, they have to be this that they're not going to learn. I made this comment to my student who got very upset and said, I'm learning. I'm learning in school, even if I may be remote, I am learning. So just please, you know, as a full remote parent, just, I understand that it's great for kids to be in, in front of the teacher. I would love for my kid to be in front of their teacher. But just remember that, you know, you offered this remote program. I would like to think that you think that this remote program is somewhere that these kids can learn and can learn along with their teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Mary Hall?
Ms. Hall, good evening.
Good evening. I wanted to comment on the disparity between the fifth grade classes. My understanding is that Liberty and Highlands fifth graders attend in-person schooling more than those at East. I think this setup of starting elementary schools a full month earlier than the middle schools will exacerbate that. I understand that some students learn very well remotely and I appreciate adding synchronous learning is helpful to some students. But frankly, remote learning does not work for my student. I also wanted to just float the idea that I am so interested in having a longer day that I would be perfectly willing to come to the school, which I have to do anyway, to pick him up and have my child eat in the car. I realize this is not something for tomorrow or next month, but it's an idea to consider if other parents would be willing to do that, if that could also help extend the school day in a safer manner. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Who do we have next, doctor?
Yep, working on it. Sorry, too many clicks. Lawrence Zuskas.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
We can.
I have a daughter in first grade at Liberty, which I know is one of the schools that is slightly more crowded. And I guess I just wanted to sort of understand what that new schedule is going to look like because right now her cohort, she has, she's one of only six students. And if the cohorts were to come together, I believe her classroom would have 19 students in it, which is a very significant increase because there's a lot more in Cohort A. And originally, if it was going to be, you know, five full days, perhaps the risk of going to three feet and being a little bit more crowded could be worth it. But, you know, if we're only adding one additional day and a slightly elongated half day, I wonder if that really, you know, if the risks of, of doing this will really outweigh that sort of, you know, additional minimal time. And then I, I also wanted to say that, you know, scheduling changes, although necessary, and the fluidity of the virus, it's extremely challenging to keep having to make different plans for our work and for our drop off and pickup. And so, you know, I would just ask that unless this is something that we think is realistic to maintain at a, you know, a, a long level of, of time, or I know we can't say permanent and I know we can't control what happens with the virus, but it seems like if we're in a good rhythm now and the students are doing well with the four half days and the remote specials, which I know my daughter is, I would think that we should consider that as a good spot versus having them go five days and then maybe having to go full remote. And it just seems like a lot of risk for not potentially that much time. But again, I don't know because the schedule wasn't released, how much time that would be, but I thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your phoning in. Dr. Hackett?
Yes, sir. Ryan Rice?
Mr. Rice?
Sorry, this is me. Hold on just a second.
No worries.
Okay, Mr. Rice, you're unmuted.
Mr. Rice? You're unmuted on our end. Technical difficulties. Can we try and go back to him?
Yeah, he's the last one. Well, I think.
Can you hear me?
Mr. Rice, we have you.
Thank you so much. We have a kindergartner and a first grader at Ross. And we were recently informed due to personal reasons. Our first grade teacher took a day of absence and personal day, as she absolutely has the right to do. But there was no solid plan for substitution for the day coverage. And while she was great at preparing ahead of time and giving the kids plenty of work to do throughout the day, we would, we'd be interested to hear the committee's position on moving forward. What is the plan for substitute teachers? What is the plan for, for coverage as the teachers have the right to take personal time, et cetera? Thank you.
Okay, doctor?
Whoops, sorry. Caitlin D., I'm not going to attempt your last name because I just don't want to do that to you.
Well, please announce your last name for us, please.
It's Potalecchio.
Oh, God.
Say that again, please?
I would have messed that up so hard.
Potalecchio, just like it's spelled.
Oh, God, love you.
It's, it's the emphasis on the different consonants. Sorry.
Just a quick comment and I trust the health experts. I thank them for coming on to talk tonight. I think it's important that we hear from them. I'd honestly like to hear from them more often so we can hear those numbers and get that feedback from them in person. I think that's why so many people reach out to the school committee because they don't necessarily know who to contact or want to bother them. But I think it would be great to have them come in more frequently. And just to touch quickly on, you know, I know we talk about DESI and their lack of guidance and I know that that's been a struggle for all districts in the state. They didn't give any guidance, but they did, you know, they did put this requirement in over the summertime to submit those three plans for fully remote, hybrid and fully in-person. And having those plans in place should have helped us to pivot with these situations to make the move to fully remote, should the numbers become worse or make the switch to full in-person, should, you know, the numbers get better. And I think having those plans in place would be in a much better position. And I can't speak to say that you do or you do not have those plans in place, but it just seems like we just have more and more discussion, more ideas, more talks. And I feel like now, you know, we just heard from the BEA president, they're going to take some time to think about these things. Now it's going to be weeks and weeks before we come to a decision. So I think most of us already realize that that January 4th date is not going to happen because there needs to be more talks and there needs to be more time and discussions that have to be had. I just wish that we could have had these plans or outlines put in place so that we could pivot. I know that's a key word that's thrown around pivot or, or move in these fluid situations more easily so that we didn't have to have weeks and weeks of discussion and conversation. Our kids have already missed so much of their education this year. So I just, that was my wish and my comment. So thank you.
Doctor?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you to each and every person that phoned in and gave us your opinion. It's greatly appreciated. Okay, at this point, we are entering into executive session. Doctor, are we going to have to come back out?
Yes, you'll have to come back out tonight.
Okay, so in other words, we have to adjourn to executive session and then come back on this site to give our decisions that will be made in the executive session. So a consideration to enter into executive session pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, a discuss a strategy for negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement and a personal service contract as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on legal position of the school committee as, as it is declared by the chair. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Don't move.
Do I have a second? I have a motion, I have a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kacoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe? He's probably with us somewhere. And the chair votes aye, that is enough to be able to enter into executive session. We'll be entering in the executive session and then we'll be coming back to render decisions. Thank you, people.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Could you just clarify for the audience what we're going into executive session for? So people can decide if they want to stay or not based on the topic?
I'll read it again. We're going in to discuss a strategy for negotiation of a collectively bargaining agreement and a personal service contract as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on legal position of the school committee.
Yeah, I just wanted people to understand that we're talking.
No worries at all. No worries at all.
Thank you.
We'll see you all in executive session and then we'll be coming back. People, if you'd like to stay, I, I don't know how long it's going to be, but I don't know. Half hour is usually about it. Okay, well, we've already put the email out to people for the executive session part of this.
We have it. I'll put it out right now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye now. Bye now.
Doctor Hackett, who are we waiting for?
Oh, there he is.
Here in the mayor.
Okay.
Oh, the mayor's here. Now we're waiting for the chair. He might, he might have got lost in a vortex or something on the way over.
Something you did there with the kazoo.
That was a good comment. We do have about 48, 37 attendees still.
Andrew, can I ask you to mute everybody until the chair shows up? Andrew, I believe Chairman Devon is the attendees. Can you bring over to the panelists?
I'll see them. See him there.
I got him in. These old eyes work that list fast, and those young eyes, what are you kidding me?
Nice work.
Mr. Devon, you're with us. Need to unmute everybody. That was interesting. I could hear you guys about the whole kazoo thing. I could hear that. Yeah. I was in, you know? One of these days, I'm going to meet a person that works for Zoom and punch them right in the face.
I think I got misquoted when, whatever you might have heard me say.
No, 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 because I recorded that. Damn it. Okay, how are we doing?
We're all back.
Oh, good God. Thank you, people, for your patience. Okay. In coming out of executive session, we have two things we have to vote on. Would anyone like to take the lead on this? As far as the motions?
I will make a motion to approve the Braintree School Cafeteria Workers Association Contract as discussed in executive session.
I'm moved. I have a motion, I have a second. Go with the roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kikoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that motion passes. And our second?
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Braintree Public Schools Maintenance Association Contract as discussed in executive session.
I have a motion? I have a motion, I have a second. So we'll go roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kikoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Both those motions have passed. There's no more business on our agenda for this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kikoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, we are now adjourned. Thank you, people, and I hope you have a good night.